Hello, my name is Kristin Rogers. I'm the Chair of the Harwood Unified Union School District. Thank you for joining us. We start each meeting with public comment. Anyone from the public can speak on a school-related matter they would like to. Each speaker is given up to three minutes. Usually, we are able to hear from everyone that would like to speak. If for some reason, there are more speakers than time allows, I will draw names. At the two and a half minute mark, I will let you know you have 30 seconds left. And at the three-minute mark, I will let you know your time is up, so we can go on to the next speaker. If you have more to share with us than three minutes allows, we invite you to email the entire board at C E N dash H U S D board at H U U S D dot org. Please know that while the board does not respond during public comment, we do always listen carefully to what is being said. If you're on Zoom and would like to speak, please click on the raised hand button. Let me get just one second. So we have three people on Zoom and we have we have exactly five. So, perfect. So I'm going to go ahead and start with the people in the room. So first one is Sarah Ibsen. If you want to come up and actually, if you want to grab one of these microphones, and then just where you're from, and you can have a seat. Come have a seat.
All right. Hi, I'm Sarah Ibsen. I teach seventh and eighth grade social studies here at Harwood. And I'm speaking about the proposed middle school merger being a part of the bond. We understand that the board leadership does not support an H U M S, C B M S, seven-eight merger. I'm here tonight representing the voice of the H U M H S staff working with middle school students, and we agree with the recommendation of the board leadership. The following points are reasons why a merger does not make sense as a part of the bond. There will be no cost savings to merging. In previous discussions, it was made clear that C B M S would require an addition to the building and likely more staff to accommodate the increase in student numbers. Secondly, the community does not support a seven-eight merger. The bond failed last year, and this is a part of the reason why. The merger increased the cost of the bond, and the community felt that it was too much money. The reality is that if we focus the bond on making improvements to Harwood's building at a lower cost, the community will be more likely to support it. Thirdly, the social emotional health and well-being of students, teachers, families, and community members has been a priority, particularly after the pandemic, as we all work tirelessly to ensure that our students and educational community are safe, learning, and growing. Our students and communities need stability and support more than ever. In the past, the board has fluctuated multiple times on the middle school merger, and continuing to revisit a merger yet again could take a devastating toll on our community and dramatically impact our students' sense of community and connectedness. As middle school educators, we strongly encourage the board to focus the bond proposal on making the needed and necessary improvements at Harwood. We would like to reiterate that the community engagement on this topic has been going on for a long time, has been damaging, and ultimately resulted in the community strongly deciding this question during the last bond vote. We have a good thing going at Harwood Middle School within the 712 Building, an administration that supports that model, and students that are thriving. We would like to continue putting our energy and priorities into educating our students and growing the H U M H S community through a successful bond vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Brian? And just make sure you state your name and your town.
Good evening. Brian Fleischer, Wheatfield. Haven't been here for a while. Nice to see all these new faces. I believe it's Sarah. I completely second what she said. I have never been for the merging. And my main point here tonight is I imagine everybody's heard the saying, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing and expecting a different result. Hiring TruX Collins would be insanity. Okay? They only know one thing that they do. It's expensive. I was in construction for 25 years, both as an electrical and general contractor, and know a little bit about what I'm talking about. I worked at NYU in the Administrative Computer Center. They gave us a floor. They didn't give us money to renovate it. They had had a bid of $850,000. I said, let me do it. We sold a computer for $200,000, did it in three stages for $550,000. Okay? The design was with a big company that had $2 million in billings. TruX Collins is their batting average is, I think, zero for however many times they've tried. And I can't blame all of it on them. I'm sure they were doing some of what they were asked by the board. But this is a holdover from Bridget's Rain, and you need to get somebody else. Okay? There's a lot of other ways of doing things. I realize they're qualified for school buildings. It may be hard to find somebody else who is, but there is somebody else out there who can build the basics that we need. I'm fully supportive of a bond to bring this building up to code with the labs and whatever else. Also, if we wanted to build in the so-called wetlands, the Supreme Court just made it possible to do that terrible decision, but that's the way it works. So please find somebody else. Okay? We've spent how many tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars on them with no benefit, really. I'm fully also, and I've said this every time I talk, I'd like to see the school made a target school for something like food services or mechanical training or something like that, if we can incorporate that into the program. I think it would be great, and I think there'd be a lot of support for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, everybody, for their service.
Jonathan Clow, I'm going to go ahead and let you talk. You should be able to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Jonathan Clow from the town of Warren, and I was a H U U S D board member from 2019 to 2022. And there has been some call for more public outreach before making a decision about the middle school mergers. For example, it was in the newspaper. And there was even some statements about repeating past mistakes if we didn't have public outreach. And as someone who was a board member when district reconfiguration was actively in the table, and we were considering a lot of different configurations, I would like to remind people about the amount of public outreach that we had at that time, tremendous amount. And much of this was about school configuration, merging the middle schools specifically. We held hours and hours of public outreach meetings. We had roundtable meetings. There were meetings in each town in the district, larger meetings across at Brook and in the Harwood Auditorium. And then after the board decided to pursue at that time the middle school merger, we heard a lot more feedback during the meetings that followed. And we heard people talking about costs, curriculum, staffing, busing, school culture, equity, student experience, and class sizes. And there were a lot of arguments for and a lot of arguments against the merger proposal. And so we did a lot of this, and we heard a lot of feedback from the community on this. And ultimately, I think the board, there were some on the board who really wanted status quo, and there are some people on the board who really wanted a dramatic reconfiguration of the district. And the merging of the middle schools was kind of a compromised position at the time, as I saw it, and that's how we went forward with it. And we brought that to the community to vote two times. Once it was part of a budget and once it was part of the bond. And these were the only two times in my 23 years of living in the valley that I witnessed a Harwood funding article fail at the polls, and I don't think either vote was particularly close. So I think that the board has done the community outreach, and the community then resoundingly said no at the polls twice. And at this time, I don't think the bond should include any reconfiguration so that Harwood can get the repairs and upgrades that the campus really needs. And finally, you know, this question about history repeating itself, I would, and you know, being a criticism which came in the newspaper, which seems backwards because history repeating itself would be including the merger and the bond again and having it get voted down a third time.
30 seconds, Jonathan.
That's all I had to say. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Alex, I'm going to go ahead and let you talk. You should be able to go ahead.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Alex Thompson. I'm a former board member also. And I'm here today to speak about the middle school vote. I'm from Waterbury, sorry. I'm not actually here to tell you which way I think you should vote, but rather, I'm asking you to consider your process. First, you're holding an important vote at the busiest time of year on an off-schedule night and conveniently on the same night as a middle school band concert. Secondly, most of you are new to the school board since the last middle school merger vote and have had little exposure to the data or the past community engagement that Jonathan was just referencing. No effort was made by your leadership or the administration to give you the information you need to make an informed vote. I would ask you to consider whether you can answer any of the following questions. How many seven, eight students are there at each of our middle schools currently? How are those numbers expected to change in the next 10 to 20 years? What are the class sizes at each middle school? What is the budget cost of each middle school, including administrators? How would the high school utilize the space? Is it possible to house all the middle school students in Crossit without additional construction? If we choose to keep two middle schools, what will the cost be to make them equitable? How will we make sure the class sizes are equal, the teaching loads are fair? Do all the kids at both middle schools have the same academic opportunities? And what does your community beyond your friend group think about the merger? If you can't answer those questions, or you have not been given the data to do so, I would ask you to think about how you are making an informed vote. I know many of you have strong opinions about the middle schools, but I would suggest that they are just opinions and not based in data or fact. You owe it to your community to learn more about the middle schools and require the administration to present you with updated financials. Your superintendent stated to the teachers earlier this week that, quote, "The most common reason expressed to me in the past year among people in the community as to why the bond failed was the middle school merger." I would challenge you as a board to gather data and not make your decisions based solely on who you have talked to. If you were to talk to me, I would tell you that it was the cost of the bond that was the biggest stumbling block. There are many unheard voices in our district, and their voices matter just as much. You have a once-in-a-generation opportunity to rebuild our high school. It desperately needs renovation and has for years. You're going to be asking our community for millions of dollars, and we need to know you care about saving money, not just spending money. Every opportunity for cost savings should be examined. Please consider that the key to community support for the bond lies in transparency, engagement, and accurate data. You are giving none of those to the voters at this point.
Thank you. Elizabeth, I'm going to go ahead and let you talk. You should be able to go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth George, and I'm actually quite new to the community. This is my first year at a Harwood school with two students in Waterbury. And I'm going to shift gears a little bit because I don't even know about this middle school situation. We're still firmly in primary. But we are a immunocompromised and disabled family, and this year was probably the roughest out of the last three, which is quite interesting. One of my students was absent for over 45 school days. And it was really, really rough on our family in general with illness. I sent some information to the board. I know that there's going to be a report coming up a little bit later. And what I'd like to ask and advocate for is to ask a few questions during, you know, the Q and A portion of this report. What kind of proactive steps were taken after an outbreak did occur in multiple of our schools? Kind of where is the postmortem on some of our schools having to close because they weren't able to maintain a safe staffing level? What proactive steps are we looking to take in the future for health and safety to meet the needs of both our disabled students but also our disabled staff? You know, immunocompromised conditions are not something that you can show physically. And the CDC has quite a long list of conditions, people who are uniquely at risk for hospitalization and outcomes up to, including death from COVID. While we would all love for that to actually be something that's over in the last few months, long COVID research across the world has been coming out stating that children specifically are at risk. One in 10 COVID infections will lead to long COVID. And we need to make sure that we're proactively fighting multiple communicable diseases within our schools so that people can attend, staff can participate, and that we're not overburdening some of our most marginalized groups. Equity seems to be something that's very important to this group, and I thank you so much for that. So I want to make sure that we're asking those questions. Is, are the health outcomes actually equitable at this point? And are we moving towards making them equitable for all? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so next I would be looking for a motion to approve the agenda. Anybody want to make that motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second.
Oh, Danielle, perfect. Any, oh, hey Cindy. Sorry. Any objection to approving the agenda? Not hearing any or seeing any that will pass. So our first item is lead school nurse. So it's Allison. So we are in a tight schedule with her. We have just 20 minutes. So we are going to stick firm to that 20 minutes so she can make it to her kid's concert. So Allison, it's yours. Do you want Kelly to share? Do you want to share? What would you like to do?
If Kelly could share, that would be great. If that's not possible, I'm ready to press the share screen button if need be. Thanks, Kelly, for being on the spot. I appreciate it. So for those of you who don't know, I'm Allison Conyers. I am one of the nurses at Brookside Primary School. I've been there for 10 years. And this year, our school district was recipient of one of 11 grants that were given to... Do I need to give you some special access, Kelly? Got it. Okay. So our school was one of 11 districts across the state that was a recipient of a Vermont Department of Health grant that promoted school nurse leadership this year. So I came and spoke to the board back in February, and this is just kind of an end-of-the-year update for folks. So the next slide shows a little bit of health services summary across the district. These are visits, screenings that we provide for students in our health offices and then med visits. So it just kind of gives you a picture of the numbers of encounters we've had with students across the district for this school year. I keep on going. There we go. So in February, when I came, we shared a little bit about the Vermont Department of Health and the Harwood District priorities, things that we wanted to focus on through the grant. So one of the top things was leadership. We wanted to develop the leadership skills of not just one nurse across the district, but all of us. So Clayton, who is a nurse at Wheatfield, myself, and then Catherine, who's a nurse here at Cross at Brook, participated in a leadership cohort with Northeastern University. We were a part of a professional collaborative across the district and met a couple of times with nurses across the state to focus on some of these other priorities that you'll see below. Mental health was one of the priorities that the Department of Health shared with us. And Jess won't ask me a question about this. I don't know if he's there tonight, about what we were doing as far as developing kind of our knowledge base on mental health. So the spring Vermont State School Nurse Association Conference was focused specifically on that. So we talked quite a bit about suicide prevention, about substance use, about supporting students' social emotional health and well-being as well. We talked a bit about vaping and substance use. I participated, and a couple of folks from Harwood and Cross at Brook actually too, participated in a Central Vermont Youth Prevention Coalition. I will continue to do that in the fall. That is a representation of a couple of community organizations. Elevate Youth Services, which was formerly known as Washington County Youth Services Bureau, Turning Points, and we had some folks representing the Northfield High School, U32, and the Berry District. So it's kind of a collaboration between a lot of different folks to brainstorm ideas and how we can respond to our youth regarding vaping and substance use. And then our school district has a task force to support both middle school and high school in alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, kind of moving forward with some more focus on that in both Cross at Brook and then Harwood Middle and High School. Nulloxone was something I did mention at the February meeting. And just an update for the board that every school has a nulloxone now, and the nurse team has developed a protocol in place so that folks in the building have access to that and athletics have access to that as well after school hours. Should there be a need for that. We also focused quite a bit on community collaboration in the second half of the year with medical homes, including dental care. I think we did talk in February about a dental hygienist and how the district has not had a dental hygienist to see students in the school for quite some time. I'm happy to say that we did eventually hire someone who came about three weeks ago and screened 45 students in eight hours. It was great. And then followed up with families and connected them to dental homes around the area. We also held some provider meetings. We met with representatives of C D M C Family Medicine, both in Waterbury and in Mad River, and then also had a great, actually, multiple conversations with the pediatric office in Berlin. And out of that came purchasing some resources through the grant to be able to support our students and families a bit differently as well, which is great. We've also focused on consistency across the district with nurse procedures. I won't read all of those to you, but you can see on there that we were really working on trying to make sure that the protocols that are being followed at Brookside are also being followed at Fason and Warren and such. So we're all, you know, performing all of our procedures in a similar way. So that was a great accomplishment as well. We also are going to meet during our in-service time and talk with a lady who's going to speak with us about individualized healthcare plans and how we can also improve those to meet the needs of students within our school too. We worked collaboratively on uniform procedures. I just talked about that. One of the procedures that we did focus on because of the communicable disease policy that was passed, I think it was back in February by the board, we worked on procedures for that. And I think that is, the hope is that that's going to be linked kind of to that procedure or policy, excuse me, on the school board website so that folks can see those administrative guidelines for that particular procedure. The grant also helped us to purchase the newest edition of managing infectious diseases in childcare in schools from the American Academy of Pediatrics. So we're focusing on the most up-to-date and current information on those specific topics. And then we're still consulting with the Department of Health as needed to report outbreaks as we had with the flu one in the fall in November and then a couple of COVID pop-ups across the board this year. So I appreciate all the folks. I was going to mention Beth Riley again. She's also one of the nurses at Brookside who took a lot of time to write information about the grants and then acknowledge Lisa and the folks at Central Office who've really done a great job of supporting us and utilizing the funding to support school nursing. So thank you all for that. And then if folks had questions or comments, I'm open to hear those.
So does any board members have questions or comments for Allison? Cindy, go right ahead.
Sure. Allison, we know that the grant that supported your position is only for this one year. How will we be, you set up for leadership of the nurses in the coming year?
So that's a great question, Cindy. Thank you. We have what's called Medicaid Administrative Claiming Funds. I think I talked about that just briefly in February, but our school is reimbursed a specific amount based on some surveying that happens between nurses, guidance counselors, health teachers, and some of the services that we're providing. So based on that survey, Medicaid provides us with a certain number of funds, and then our nurse group, some other representatives get to say how we'd like to use those funds. So in the fall, we're planning on utilizing some of those funds for a point. I think it will end up being point one. So one day a week, I can be relieved of direct care duties at Brookside to be able to do some leadership activity. So we're looking for someone to commit to substituting at Brookside one day a week in the fall next year so that I can still do some of these things that we are working on this year.
And I just approved that plan at the end of... There we go. It's been two weeks, and I forgot how to use the microphone. I just approved the use of those funds just at the end of last week. So we're excited that Allison's going to be able to do, continue to do some of that coordinating work.
Danielle, go ahead.
That's great.
Just thinking about the woman who spoke earlier today in the public comment portion, just wondering, Allison, if you could just give a very, like, an elevator version of what the protocol is with outbreaks such as the flu and COVID, just in a nugget.
Sure. So any of the outbreaks that we start to see kind of at our schools, that we get information from parents reporting their child's absences and reasons for that. So the nurse team does a little bit of investigating on those. We consult with the Department of Health, and we use their guidance on determining whether or not those pieces are considered outbreaks. They define flu outbreaks. It's 10% of the school being absent for flu-like symptoms. With COVID, it's a little bit different. The protocol for that is three cases that are linked within the school with no outside ways to, you know, connect them outside of the school. So really, we're really using our Vermont Department of Health folks, the epidemiologists, that is accessible to us there. We work at the Berry Health or District, the Berry District Health Office. And there is a school nurse liaison who works directly with the school districts that the Berry Health Office covers, and we have access to all the time. She'll connect us with epidemiologists. They give us guidance, and then we provide notification to the schools, the staff, and the families on next steps.
Any other questions or comments from the board for Allison? Okay, I'm not seeing anything. Thank you so much, Allison, for putting that together and enjoy the concert.
Thanks, Kristin.
Okay, so we are going to move on to action items. So the first action item that we have was to affirm the, affirm continuation of the existing grade configuration Harwood Union. Sorry, Harwood Union Middle High School as a grade seven through 12 campus, middle high, sorry, middle school and high school for the purpose of bond planning. So that's a suggested motion if anybody wanted to make that motion.
Also move.
Oh, J B, okay. Is there a second? Ashley will second. Okay, we will open up for discussion if anybody would like to say anything. Don't know, grab your microphone buttons at once. J B, did you want to say anything or?
Sure, yeah. Well, I'm just, and I think we had a good discussion of it at last meeting, but you know, I don't need to rehash all the arguments against it. You know, whether it's the extra travel time it would add for students from Warren, Granville, even coming over the gap. I don't think they'd be able to do it, probably have to find schooling elsewhere. There's just so many reasons against it. But first and foremost, I think history has proven that in the last couple of bond votes, that that was the trigger in it being turned down. So I would strongly urge my fellow board members to nip this in the bud and make the bond planning process, as it develops over the course of the year, a smoother process that's more focused on what the district needs, especially the high school and whatever renovations are going to take place.
Cindy, I saw your hand next. If you'd like to go ahead.
Yeah. I just, I just thought that Jonathan's letter was excellent. And I stand very much on the same position where I really had supported the merger in the last bond vote and came on board, kind of thinking that I would help to promote that. And then for many of the same reasons that Jonathan pointed out in his letter, I just felt like it was reiterating what I said. So thank you, Jonathan, wherever you are, even though you're not here. Anyway, I found that very helpful.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would, Bobby, go ahead.
I also found Jonathan's letter very helpful. For those of you who aren't aware and members of the public, he gave us pros and cons and talked about what a difficult decision it was. And dating from 2019, there was flip-flopping and a lot of struggle over the issue. I am wondering, I mean, I, you know, and I understood our discussion last week is really we have great many expenses to focus on in this Harwood facility. And the cost of construction being what it is, we can anticipate that the addition of doing something across at Brook would considerably increase the price tag and would be detrimental at this time. The question I have is if this issue of merging the middle school is an important one, if it could be looked at separately from the bond issue, or if it's a, you know, if it changes how the bond goes. And I was kind of weighing this back and forth. And so, you know, I wonder, because I know there's still very strong feelings about this middle school merger. about this middle school merger, if we might look at creative ways that this merger could happen between the two facilities while still maintaining the structure at the, that we have right now. I mean, I heard some arguments about bringing the kids together. Well, maybe we could do something like that or there are other solutions besides in a bond issue. So I'm open to looking creatively at ways that the middle school, whatever the issues are, could be addressed that people are concerned about in not having a merger. But I'm also extremely sensitive to the fact that there are numerous issues here in this facility that we're sitting in right now that need to be addressed and cannot be addressed through the maintenance budget. So that's, I'm just putting it out there.
You know, I was, I was really open to this in, in our last session and I was sort of thinking, you know, I really don't want to, you know, sort of give this never say never kind of attitude on any issue moving forward. And then I started listening to community members and I listened to colleagues and I read emails and I heard from faculty and even heard from students about the uniqueness of the two buildings and the uniqueness of the two communities. And while I have found that there may be all kinds of what-if possibilities about what could happen. I'm really not finding anything there that is making me feel like this must happen now, that it must happen even in the near future. That it must happen as a result of something that is sort of just off the horizon that we need to react to. And I'm, I'm someone who was sort of very much thinking about, you know, well, this, this could really work for our community, this, this idea of merger. And now I'm thinking to myself, I, I just don't see why we would and why we would, why we do go there as a community when it, when, when our constituents very plainly do not want us to go there. So my vote has definitely changed to a solid no. And I, I really urge everyone else, if they're sort of on the fence about that, to really consider what the constituents want because I think, I think it's been very clearly given to us. So, thanks.
Thank you, Ben. Is there anybody else that would like, go ahead, Ashley.
Ben kind of made my point. I think one of the biggest losses would be not having the Harwood Middle School. Like I went there and loads of people I know went there. He went, oh, you didn't go there? But I will say that I, I have numerous reasons for thinking we should remove this from the discussion. One is time. Time is of the essence. We need to make a plan and move forward. The thing I've heard the most from the community myself is needs are more important than wants. I think that the needs bill is going to be huge. So I think we, we need to focus on the campus here at Harwood. That's, that's where we know we have stuff to do the most. If it was eight million dollars a year or two ago to do up the, to do up Crossit for, to, to add another, the rest of the middle school kids, it was eight million then. We know with the Harwood, the Waysfield Kitchen, it doubled in a year. That's a, what's that, a twenty million dollar line item for that? Or Lisa looks terrified. See, so I, personally, I do not want to close any school. That's just me. So I'm all for making this choice. Saving ourselves time and aggravation. And to Bobby's question, can we? I think we do that. I think our middle schoolers do get together. I'd love to hear what Dylan thinks.
We're going to go to Jake, Danielle, and then we can go to Dylan. Go ahead, Jake.
I'm ready. Okay. So I, I wanted to make like a couple of points, I think, about really just like the last couple of weeks in general with the way that this discourse has kind of evolved in the community. And one is about, you know, the board process. Yeah, you know, there was definitely a breakdown in communication with some community members about the way we went about doing this. I think we need to be careful about that in the future. It's clear that at least some community members, you know, felt obligated enough to write into local papers or directly to our email inbox and say, hey, don't like do something behind the scenes here. Like, don't like throw something away. Don't like, don't plan this next bond without community input. And that was the main concern and and I'm just thinking we should have communicated that a little bit differently. And I feel, I almost feel bad because I think I kind of recommended that we make this decision last meeting. And I just think it should have been just communicated a little bit differently because we got a lot of strong reactions. Yeah, and, and the other thing is I, listen, my vote is no. I, I, I don't think we need to be putting this on the docket for the bond right now. You know, the middle school merger does not need to be included in this bond, in my opinion. But I'll almost play a little bit of devil's advocate for myself saying that. And that is, you know, in a, in a perfect world, we would have merged middle schools. You know, you can take it from me as like a Waterbury student from not so long ago. There, there really is kind of an odd division that happens between the two middle schools. And I'm not saying it's anything too intense, but it is hard to go to Crossit Brook or go, yeah, go to Crossit Brook and then go to Harwood and integrate with those kids when you're just a freshman. It, it is hard for some of us. It doesn't happen very naturally. There's a little bit of like ownership from students that had already been in the building for a couple of years. It, it creates an interesting social dynamic. And eventually by the time we were juniors or seniors, like we, we got over it, but it, it was, it's tough at first. And so, you know, you know, there's just like operative word of like division that's at play. There's also literally like this geographical division going on. I mean, you, you pull out of Harvard, you take a right, you go to Waterbury, you take a left, you go to every single other town in the district. And it's kind of funny the way that works, right? Because you could definitely see the difference in opinions from community members when you take that right versus you take that left. And however, all that being said, I, again, I don't, I don't support the middle school merger at this time. But again, in a perfect world, I would like to see eventually this discussion happen again. But now is not the time.
Thank you, Jake. Danielle?
I agree with everything that's been said. The two points I will add is that one, there's a new administration administrator at Crossit. So let's let her get her feet under her and, and get that school doing what she's, you know, there to, to do. So that's a minor point, though. Overall, I think when it comes down to it, having the bond vote focus on safety and structural needs is a priority. I think a lot of the other things that are being talked about that we saw in emails, exchanges, even that was just said about the social interactions. I think many of those can be addressed or mitigated without a bond, you know, investment. They are things like equity of education and class size. That's something that can be taken up and looked at aside, you know, without changing the structure of the schools. And so I think that that's a real issue. It's very clear from people's communications to us that that's of concern. And I think it should be something we look at, but not through the bond.
Thank you, Danielle. Dylan, did you want to say anything?
Okay, I guess I can say a little bit about like the connections at least now that, since the schools are separately, obviously. Like there's like activities outside of school, like sports and music and they put on like dances. And I think the, like the two schools do a good job of connecting the kids, but going forward, that's something they could like focus on more. Try to like build like a stronger connection because like, uh, like connecting to what Jake said about like the separation, it definitely is like, it's definitely something that like gets in the way of your freshman year. When you're like seeing all these new people and they've already like know the school so well. But I feel like that's something everyone gets over pretty quickly. So maybe just more like integration between the two schools would be helpful.
Thank you, Dylan. Did anybody else would like to say anything? Before we vote? Okay, let's go ahead and vote then. So I'm just going to bring up the tally sheet. The motion on the table is to move to affirm continuation of the existing grade configuration of Harwood Union Middle High School as a grade seven through twelve campus, middle school and high school for the purpose of bond planning. Dylan? Dylan's a yes. Ashley? Ashley's a yes. Bobby? Bobby's a yes. JB?
Yes.
JB's a yes.
Yes.
Wait, you said yes, correct? Yeah, he said, JB said yes, sorry. Uh, Cindy?
Yes.
Cindy's a yes. Jonathan Young?
Yes.
Jake? Jake's a yes. Ben? Marlena is not here. Life is not here. Tori's not here. She's in Scotland. She's having a great time and they have nice weather. Danielle?
Yes.
Danielle's a yes. Mike is not here. Kelly? And that will pass. So for purpose of bond planning, did you want to say anything, Mike? That has passed.
That will continue with the process for bond planning. And we will look at the three buckets and do a presentation. And the presentation's purpose over the next year is to get the input of the public on those three areas. And to bring back that recommendation then to the board next spring.
Some. So the next action item is to, so we are going to be having a bond leadership team. And Ashley and Cindy had expressed interest. There is a spot for one more board member. We didn't have anybody that reached out to us. So I didn't know if there was anybody in the room that wanted to hang out with the other bond leadership team members for the summer. And their, the commitment's going to be like an every other week thing. You have to commit for the full time. So was there anybody else who, Kelly, did you want to join that? Because
what's the full time? Can you just clarify?
So the full time meaning from start to finish. So if your term is up in March, you are not eligible for this. So you are, when you say yes, heck yeah, I want to be on this. Then you are committing for all the work from now until it goes to the voters and what, you know, anything in between. Okay, so I guess there's no other takers. It's going to be you and Cindy then. So we do have a suggested motion. We'll bring that up. Bobby, go ahead. Did you have a, oh, do you want to?
And some people are not able to be here tonight. Do we want to give another little bit of time? I don't know when you have to start the work. You can't, you have to know now.
We've actually been putting it in the leadership reports for the past few weeks. So yeah, that last time we kind of held off, that kind of bit us a little bit. So Kelly and I have both felt that there's been ample opportunity for board members to reach out. Probably the, this is the third leadership report. We probably put it in. So, but did you want to join it? Okay, so would anybody like, Kelly? Yeah, go ahead.
But to speak to that, board members are certainly welcome to join in on the conversation. It's just that, that they would not be, I guess, voting on or they're making any decisions.
Meetings zoomable and public?
They, they will have to be public.
Okay.
Yep. It's going to, so basically just think about it as like a committee. So all committee meetings have to be held in a space. If it's going to be a hybrid that the public can join in, but if it's going to be a Zoom-only meeting, as long as it's worn like that, then it can be a Zoom, but they have to be held in public. So board members could zoom in to watch or people from the public as well. So okay, so would anybody like to make that motion that we'll bring up again? Bobby?
Well, I move to appoint Ashley Woods and Cindy sending to the board leadership team, the bond leadership team.
I'll second that.
JB, second. Okay. Any discussion or questions? Or jealousy from any other board members? How you get to hang out all summer? You are jealous, Ben?
I am jealous. The reason why I am jealous is because those two individuals are highly qualified and they will serve as representatives from the board very well in that capacity. And if either of you are needing any help whatsoever in, in doing what you're doing, feel free to reach out to Kelly who will help you at any moment. I have her assurance.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, so the motion on the table is to appoint, move to appoint Ashley Woods and Cindy sending to the bond leadership team. Is there any objection or obsessions to that motion? Not hearing any or seeing any, that will pass. Have fun. Okay, so the next action item is to, it was hyperlinked in the agenda, was to approve the hourly proposal from TruX Collins for bond work. If anybody would like to make that motion. Clarifying.
So this is for Okay, yeah, this is, so this is for the initial what? I mean, approval. I, it, when I read it, it sounded a little vague to me. I just didn't. And I, I will admit that I, like Brian, am not sure about TruX Collins. So I, what, I'm curious what we're approving, just an initial conversation hourly time? Is that what it is?
And part of the questions we'll have are our current projections for costs for the different areas that we're considering. As Lisa and I shared before with the board, we have no affiliation or connection to the current architects, but both Lisa and I have done extensive school construction work. Me, K-12, Lisa at higher end at Rutgers. And we, we could, the board could look at a request for proposals and look at other architectural firms. We would probably be adding another year or so to the process. When you look at the work that they have done to date, it, it's pretty intense and pretty in-depth. So they have a very strong feeling for what that is. It would take time to get another architect up to speed. So we, we are happy to, we're happy to, we've had some meetings with them and Lisa and I are both comfortable with what we've heard. I think just because of our experience, I think you'll, you will see that Lisa and I on the school team will be more directive in what our expectations are as far as proposals and other work and have some questions for them to make sure that we are getting value for our dollars. So, so, so we're happy to do what the board wants in this case, but, but I, I would say that we would be adding at least a year, perhaps more. Want to add any, any thoughts from your perspective, Lisa?
I agree with what, what Mike said, that we would be adding lead time and delaying the process. They are in the know. They know they've had extensive work done on this already. We have no objections going out. It's really up to the board of what they want to do. We would be delaying at least a year.
Before any questions, we really need a motion and a second. No, 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 it's fine. It was a clarifying. We really, we would need a motion and then a second to continue.
This motion, we still have some wiggle room as to what we decide. This is for their initial conversation. We're not signing on with them. Okay, I'll make the motion.
What you're saying is we need to make a motion and second it and then have discussion. Okay.
Yeah, move to approve hourly proposal from TruX Collins.
And so then, and Kelly, did you say your second? Okay. And so Danielle, I saw your hand up. You can go ahead.
Two questions for Mike and Lisa first. From your experience, because I wouldn't have a clue how there because I wouldn't have a clue how their budget proposal kinda stacks up. Um, like, is there merit in going out to RFP or does that budget those costs that they put forward, are those reasonable, is my first question, and the other question is, um, we did hear some strong comments about this um, entity and not having any history with them. I'm wondering if there is documentation or anything that we could look at that about previous work around, like, what might be the concerns that, that other folks might have had?
To address the, the hourly cost and her perspective, but, but the other piece, uh, we, we've talked to, Ray has been the primary person, we're doing a lot of the groundwork and, and Ray has felt very comfortable with our work to date. And again, what, what they would have completed is analysis of the building. Uh, they've done some work, as, as Ray has uh, developed some of the, you know, some of the immediate needs that have had to be addressed uh, in absence of a bond. They, they did a lot of the schematic design, you know, the overall idea of what this would look like. Uh, once we would have a bond and have specifics, we would have to get to that more ground level of design development phase. Uh, so there would be work that would have to occur later uh, from uh, based on what we're doing, but the, the challenge when you go to another architectural firm is there is, there is cost also in getting up to speed on a lot of the intricacies of a, of a system, a large, a large high school. The best time uh, for this kind of large scale project to, to get, to do an RFP is when you're between projects. Not, not in the middle of a project, which is why we're comfortable at this time proceeding, and if anything would change, we would be happy to share that with the board and be very upfront about that.
Work that.
I'm sorry.
Can, can Lisa speak to how the cost stacks up? Or, I didn't?
This is preliminary, just hourly work to, for the feasibility of discussions of how we move forward. Um, again, they would develop a, a cost estimate, um, and then we would, that would be a part of the RFP, but again, this is really to discuss where we're at, where we wanna go, what is needed, um, and this is just a minimum, minimal, just to kickstart the discussions of where, where we wanna go and where we see us going.
So, I, I, I am familiar with them from back when we started with them at the Warren School and I sat in on their initial presentations for the, what we did down there. Looks great, they did a great job, I, I don't have a problem with them like that, I, my question is though, they've done a lot of work for the district and you say they've done schematic drawings and they've weighed up all this stuff. Do we own all that? Do we own the work because we've already paid them gobs of money, or is that like, if we say we want, we, we might go with someone else that we don't get any access to what we've paid for them to do for the first bond?
A, a lot of the work we have is already in, uh, actually, if you, if you look through the bond website, a lot of their work's already there in existence.
Which the link to the bond website is in the leadership report. Bobby?
Presumably, we're gonna be eliminating some of the things that were in the original bond, because a lot of it had to do with vacating the middle school, reusing the middle school for something else. So there may be some opportunities and, and some of the work that's already been done, so hopefully we, we'll see, you know, a reduction in the work.
Be our hope as well.
Feasibility, what is feasible, what do we wanna move forward with, let's look at what we've done in the past, what they developed um, and what they designed, and then where we now are the vote this evening and how we wanna go forward, because there will be obviously changes now without merger.
What I recall from the original bond, uh, besides the work that was going to be done across the brook was work here and part of that included creating office space for the administration. And I, I'm wondering if that's still, if that's still a need, I mean, we've talked a little bit about the rent and the lease at the, where we are.
So I think we're getting just a little off topic.
Getting a little off topic, okay.
So that would come with the bond planning and looking all, at all the buckets and, and looking at all the stuff, so that would, that would be part of part of the bond leadership team that they would look at, cuz that, I, that was part of the original bond, so they're gonna look at everything. Any other questions or comments before we were to vote? Okay, so if you wanna bring the tally sheet up? Or just bring the tally sheet up? Um, the motion on the table is move to approve hourly proposal from TruX Collins for bond work, uh, we'll just do a roll call, Dylan? Dylan's a yes. Ashley? Ashley's going to abstain. Bobby?
Yes.
JB, I think he zoomed off. Okay, so JB. Um, Cindy?
Yes.
Jonathan Young is not on. Uh, Jake? Uh, Ben? Ben's a yes. Tori's still in Scotland. Danielle? I know, still. She's deciding.
Ugh, there's no cap on it, so I'm struggling, cuz it's just like, this is what it, our rate is to do the work and it's. I will, I will say yes. To support this work moving forward.
And then do I? Okay. That will pass. So that will pass. Oh. Make sure that. So I'll go yes. So that will pass. Okay, so the next um, motion is to approve, we had, uh, we have two policies that suddenly we were told we need to approve for warning. Bam, you gotta approve them for warning. So the plan will be that we will approve these for warning and we will adopt them at our August thirtieth meeting. Which is over two months away. Yes, so we brought the motion up, um, if anybody would like to, these are mandatory policies. If anybody would like to make that motion.
I would like to make that motion.
As written?
I would like to make that motion as written.
Okay. Is there a second? Bobby will second, um, any discussion on the policies? Go ahead, yeah, please.
Well, briefly, there was a, a school safety bill that was in the general assembly this term, uh, the session, and it was passed and the governor recently signed it. And it mandates that by August, we have a poli, these two policies online. Uh, it, it requires pieces like uh, access control to the buildings. It also requires safety drills. Uh, and then also a, a threat assessment team, so if you have any kind of student who makes a threat, there, there's, there has to be a, a district wide team who assesses the situation, uh, there's gonna be training for that piece as well. But it happened very quickly, uh, with the, with the requirement to have this online. This is a policy that came from the Vermont School Boards Association, both of them, and it's recommended, it's actually required, but they are recommending both policies.
You for that. Um, any other further discussion, questions, comments? Okay, so um, is there any objection to approving the policies for warning the fire and emergency preparedness drills? And access control and visitor management, any objection or abstentions? If you're on Zoom and you are, just yell out, because. Okay, not seeing any, that will pass. Okay, moving right along. So, next up is the introduction of our new administrators, if you guys wanna have a seat right over here. It's not scary, I promise, the seats are actually very comfortable.
Coming up, what I will do is I'll briefly introduce each one. And I ask them to say just a few words to the board, just to give them a little, give you a little overview. Uh, but for each candidate, there was an extensive interview process. And uh, we were just thrilled uh, with the outcome, I think we have, I, I know we have three quality people. And I will start on the right with, with Kate Liftak, who's gonna be our new principal at the Moretown School. She's currently an associate K to eight principal at Chelsea Turn, Turnball. Am I, am I saying that right? Tunbridge, Chelsea Tunbridge. Yes. I always have trouble with my, 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 that, that, the, the T word there, Tunbridge. So apologies to that town. Uh, but, but but importantly, Kate is a, a graduate of Harwood. Uh, she's a resident of Moretown, has children in the district, and we are just thrilled uh, to have you, Kate.
Well, thank you for inviting me tonight, um, it's lovely to be here with all of you. I am very much looking forward to stepping in and uh, working with the staff and faculty and community of Moretown. Mike Didsherry have three children in the district, um, at Moretown Elementary School, one is going to be going into his second year of preschool. So we have quite a bit of time left ahead of us at that school. Um, looking forward really to working with the veteran staff. Have been meeting with them uh, two or three days or so now and meeting with each team individually. There's a lot of strength in that building, a lot of um, community connections in that building and community events, and I'm just really looking forward to putting my hand in the ring and adding to what they already do. I know that they're really great at bringing people in, and now that we're out of COVID, I look forward to doing a lot more of that.
And Bethany will understand my confusion with the words, I, I had Bethany Turnball in my head when I was saying your school, so. And I'm a little under the weather, so my mind is not as clear tonight. Uh, so I apologize to, to you, but Bethany Turnball is our, our, uh, uh, our, our new assistant principal here at Harwood. Uh, she is replacing Dwayne as he moves to Crossit Brook and uh, Chelsea, uh, um, Bethany as well, not, see, I'm, I'm really, my, my mind is I, I told, I told Kristen before the meeting, I don't wanna talk too much tonight. But Bethany uh, lives in Bston, has children in the school as well, and is also a graduate, and uh, we are excited to have her, and I think she's gonna bring just a tremendous dynamic, she has a very strong background in mental health. Uh, and, and in this current environment in our country, but also our community, I think that's a very critical piece, so Bethany, welcome.
Yeah, I'm very excited to be here and honored to be coming back as an administrator in the Harwood community. Um, I do have two children at the Bston Elementary School, they are nine and seven, so rising fourth and rising second graders. Um, as Mike said, I do have a strong background in mental health. Uh, prior to becoming an administrator, I was actually a therapist, um, at Lemoyle Union as a contracted school-based clinician. Um, so I've taken that therapeutic lens and brought it to um, a, a leadership role in the current assistant principal at Lemoyle High School. Um, so I've really taken that therapeutic lens and used it to look at the, the bigger picture, what our students' behaviors are telling us and where the needs are in our building, and then finding um, the resources to provide those needs. Um, so I'm really excited to, to bring that as part of my practice here at Harwood, um, and also very well experienced in restorative practices, so incorporating those as well.
We also have Jen Duran, and there's no confusion with either of her first name or last name for me, that's very clear cut. Uh, Jen will be our new co-principal along with Dwayne Pearson at Crossit Brook Middle School. Uh, Jen has a very extensive background as well uh, in education, she was, she's currently a math teacher at Winuski. Uh, but started early in her career, was a behavior interventionist, so has a number of skills uh, as, as, as well as uh, some, some, some background in um, restorative practices, uh, and other areas that I think she's gonna be just a perfect complement to the work of Dwayne, that Dwayne does there, they're both very much looking forward to working together, and the story I tell about uh, Jen is early in her career when she was working on her administrative certificate, she, she actually interviewed Dwayne, and this is the story that Dwayne told me, left the room saying, I would really like to work with you someday, Dwayne, so, so that, that statement had a lot of uh, uh, a, a meeting and, and has come to fruition, and uh, Jen is a resident of Moretown and also has children in our district, so we're thrilled to have three residents of the district who also have a vested interest in the success of our schools, so Jen?
As I was going to be giving an unprepared speech tonight, but that's okay. Um, I'm absolutely thrilled to be here, I'm thrilled to be a part of this community, I've loved living in this community for the past five, six, seven years, I think. And um, to be a part of Crossit Brook with such an amazing, strong staff, great students who are coming into those middle school years that is my favorite time, strangely, um, that kids go through because they are not only figuring themselves out, but also trying to sort of buck the system, and that's how, that's where I like them, because that's when I get to work with them and train them and teach them how to be the great, wonderful children that they will eventually be when they go on to Harwood with you, and um, and I can't be more thrilled to be working with Dwayne, um, this coming year, and just so excited, thank you.
Thank you guys so much for coming, we really, it's really nice to put a name to a face, of course, I know a couple of you, but it's really nice to see all of you. So thank you so much for taking your time out and your evening for coming. Thank you. By the way, we provide snacks at board meetings. It's, it's Cookie Wednesday. It's goulag free double stuffed Oreos and regular chocolate chip cookies, so.
Oh, Kristen, I was at a family wedding in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania this weekend, and a very hundred-year-old tradition of uh, Pittsburgh is a cookie table, so friends and family bring cookies to the wedding in, in addition to the cake, so I gave uh, Kristen a new tradition to start in Vermont, the Vermont Cookie Table.
Yeah, for sure. Um, so next up is going to be our food service presentation. This was the agenda request that had been put in by Bobby. So just so you know, you'll need to use your microphones when you wanna talk, and if you guys just wanna go ahead and and it's not scary, I promise you. Um, if you guys wanna go ahead and introduce yourselves, and then it's all yours. Yeah. You have something to share?
We do, Kelly has it already, so if you can run that and we can talk and we.
Perfect.
We will do the. All right, my name's Erica Dolan, I'm the food service co-director for the district. And um, I've been doing this job for fifteen years now, I've been finishing my fifteenth year. The last time I presented in a board meeting was in two thousand and eight, so. Been a little um, rusty on board meetings, but I think we, we managed to do a nice presentation for you guys, and of course, we know all the data and know all the things, so we and I'm kind of addicted to board meetings, so I watch all of you guys in my free time, all the time, not live, but afterwards, so. Um, you know all what happens here, so.
I'm Paul Morris, also a co-director, working with Erica. Um, we've been doing this for, I think, it's our fourth year, we, the third year, we became co-directors right before the pandemic kicked in, and the timing actually worked out great for that, because we all needed to work together big time during the pandemic. Um, so anyway, thank you for inviting us today. I understand you wanna hear a little bit about the logistics of the Waitsfield Kitchen, Bston Kitchen. Um, I will try to give you a little synopsis of it, we have PowerPoint deck, which we can go, I can kinda give you a little synopsis of what we're looking at doing there, and then we can go through the PowerPoint. If you have some questions at that point, we can just answer the questions however you wanna do it from there. First of all, thank you for approving the kitchen at Waitsfield, we are very excited about having a new kitchen there. Uh, I think the real goal of the new kitchen there is to improve the food at. Both Facetown and at Waitsfield. Um, there are a lot of logistics in food service. Having the bigger kitchen at Waitsfield gives us the opportunity to really be able to prepare the food. In a quicker fashion, more modern kitchen. Um, we will be. Doing, we will be having orders from our main purveyor coming to. The Waitsfield Kitchen and also the Facetown Kitchen. We will be doing prep work at. Both schools. Um, currently, all of the food is prepared at Facetown and is um, transported to Waitsfield. Uh, our goal is to try to do whatever prep we can. So now we have two kitchens that are actually fully commercial kitchens. Which is a huge difference. Uh, right now, everything that goes to Waitsfield has to be. Transported there and then transported back. All of, we have no dishwasher there, so. Uh, I'm sure you have the gist of what's going on over there. But um, so we do, we have a lot of staff transport of food and equipment. And there's definitely some safety issues in our Vermont winters doing that. And that's two to four trips a day. Um, so we are trying to get as. To pare those trips down as much as possible. Again, serve the best quality food we can at both schools. So now we have. Ovens, dishwashers, refrigeration, freezers at Facetown. Um, we are doing roughly about seventy-five. Meals at Facetown, hundred and twenty, hundred and ten-ish at Waitsfield. Um, so tran, what we are going to be transporting will be considerably less than what we're shipping from Facetown to Waitsfield. Um, so we are very excited to figure out the logistics. Get the kitchen open and work very closely in those kitchens to make sure that. Each school is getting the food that they deserve and that each school is getting high-quality food. And we're excited about it. And the staff are excited about it. Um, that's great.
So we have a little bit of data and, um, in our PowerPoint presentation, so you can, you know, visualize a little bit more of that data and then. I, I guess after we finish everything, then maybe we can do questions or maybe. Perfect. Alright, go for it, Kelly. Alright, so we start with Waitsfield. There's some little bit of data there, like our enrollment, daily attendance, uh, average daily attendance. Total meals served that we had to the day that I did the PowerPoint, average daily participation. Average daily participation based on daily attendance, the percentage. And then we're going to be talking about two examples of how we transport meals now and how we foresee. Transporting meals in the future, which we got to, you know, simple examples, like one pizza that we transport in sheet trays. And the other one mac and cheese that we transport in hotel pans, which are different, you know. Um, and then how many meals we serve in those days, in that particular day at Waitsfield. And then we're comparing with the same day at Facetown, which is the next slide. So as you can see, we, oh, just go, go back a little bit, Kelly. We serve a hundred and nineteen students in one day and a hundred and eight students the other day, plus the staff. Which we always transport a little bit of extra in case, you know, you know, maybe five or, I don't, I'm not a hundred percent sure what she over. Transports in case there are more kids that end up taking the meals. So there are skills or things like that. So the transportation is a little higher, it's not set in stone on that particular number. And then go ahead. And then that's Facetown Elementary School, uh, with the same exactly data from the same exactly time period and the same dates. So we could, you know, kind of compare both of them. The numbers are, you know, of course, we have less students at Facetown than we have at Waitsfield, so the numbers are smaller for transportation. Go ahead. So we thought it would be easier for you to understand what the two positions do typically in a day. Um, in the current logistics. And Kelly, if you could share this with the board later, so people can have this as a reference, you know. Once, you know, just take a look on after, because there might be other questions after the fact in this meeting too. Um, so the director typical day and assistant typical day. So right now, the director starts a face and does all the prep there for Waitsfield and Facetown. And then usually she serves lunches at Facetown, does, you know, and in between, so, and, and this is what is critical in this. Scenario now that sometimes it's hard to understand. Just looking at from the outside, what the director's doing right now. When she has free time is all her work, you know, so she's doing paperwork, she's doing ordering, she's doing prep for next day, she's doing. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes works that is happening at Facetown. Why she's not serving meals or why she, you know, she already loaded Waitsfield meals, so Waitsfield meals are gone. But it's not really time to serve face some kids yet. And, you know, so in that period of that gap, she does a lot of this prep work or ordering or. Other logistics like cleaning the freezers, the wa, you know, like whatever she needs to get done in her day happens at that time. When she goes to Waitsfield, for example, if she's rotating that day and she's going to spend her day at Waitsfield. She's really not doing that work there, that she's pri. In theory, primarily the only one doing that, you know, the food war, ordering the paperwork, so she's. Not really doing that work there. And then assistants, the assistant, as you can see, she spends a lot of time. A lot of daytime transporting food or dishes, uh, back and forth. Um, you know, i- it's kind of like a, 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 what we call lost time, that she could be doing. More prepping and more investing more into the program, but she's unfortunately can't, because that's how the program is set up right now. Let's, let's go, you know, so that kind of talks a little bit about that now that. Um, that we transport a la, a large meal, a large amount of meals from Facetown to Waitsfield. That, um, a lot of the time of the system is, you know, transporting food instead of doing cleaning, prepping and all, you know. Being trained in other tasks that she's not right now, because part of her job is to do this transportation piece. Um, and, you know, sometimes you, you don't think about, but even the time like to. Leave the, you know, put everything in a cart, put it in your car. Unload, like, that takes a lot of time. It's not just the timing between one school to another. Uh, there is a lot of extra time there. Um, and all the food transported to Waitsfield is ready for service, either cold or hot. So either if it's a, you know, cold sand or she, the way that it leaves Facetown, it's ready for service. So this is what we kind of like visualizing, um, that is going to happen next year. And of course. There's, there are some things, logistics that we don't know that is going to happen yet, that we might need to change a little bit, but. The director's going to start her day at Waitsfield. And. I, I know that the word flip-flop has been utilized a lot, and I would like us not utilize that word anymore. Because it's, we, we are not really flip-flopping this, because they are completely different. Um. So I would like to be on the record for this, that we should not be utilizing this word, um, that, um. The scope of the work is going to be completely different. So we will be starting at Waitsfield, or the director will be starting at Waitsfield, doing the prep for both Facetown and Waitsfield. Serve lunches at Waitsfield and continue to do the same thing, her paperwork, her ordering, all the things that she usually does related to her. Job assignments and finish her day at Facetown. As you can see, the assistant now, her schedule looks a lot shorter. Because she's going to spend a lot of more time prepping and, um. You know, instead of transporting. So she's going to start her day at Facetown. Does the prep for the day there. So she's, you know, facing, we're not closing facing kitchen. It's gonna, we're gonna still operate faces at, facing as a normal. Operating kitchen, just like it is, it is today. Um, and then she's going to go to Waitsfield, do some prep there, pick up the food. Come back to Facetown and finish her days there. There's no more, no, no more transporting dishes, no more. Everything is done there. Shipping the breakfast or, you know, bringing the clean trays back to Waitsfield. Um, so a lot of her time when she's not serving, she can be doing prepping for the next day or can. Be doing, um, and when the director's does the assistant job and goes to Facetown. That can be the same, her job is mirror exactly the same. There is no more changes now, because the director can do her job. Exactly the same at Facetown as she can do at Waitsfield, which she cannot do right now. And that's a big change. Um, you know. That initially, I think people just didn't understand how much more time actually the director's going to be able to balance. So if you go to the next slide, please. So. We foresee that the director's going to be able to balance herself and her schedule way better now. And spend more time investing both programs equally than she is right now. Because of the fact that she cannot really do her job fully at Waitsfield, the same way that she can do at Facetown. Um. And, um, we'll be transporting less food. And then the, the biggest thing is, I get, well, the, the second biggest thing. Is that a lot of the items are going to be prepared at Waitsfield, but not cooked away. So they are going to be transported. Ready to cook at Facetown. So that is a, you know, so kids are going to be having. You know, fresh cooked meals at Facetown. We're not, we're not going to not be cooking at Facetown. We're going to be. Um, continue to do that the same, not the same exactly way, but there are a lot of items. And like, for example, I, I spoke with Cheryl today, the director, the director, and. You know, just to double check that all the information that I had was, that we had talked was correct. It's like, oh, you should say that, for example, the burgers and the salad bar, for example, and all their meals that she mentioned. Are going to be fully prepared at Facetown. The assistant will not even go to Waitsfield that day. Because everything can now, because now we can receive deliveries at. Facing and Waits, which we can not do that much at Waitsfield right now, because we don't have a freezer there. So things can be shipped in both buildings right now, and we can. Fully cooked at Facetown, uh, you know, some of the meals. So some items. It, it's hard to maintain to fully equip, fully, um, I know, I don't want to say equipped, but. Operational kitchens in a, in a way that if you have. The way that we, you got to understand how we order food. So we order fifty-pound bag of carrots. You know, instead of ordering two fifty-pound carrot bags of carrots, we might order one and, you know, share and ship. Half and half to each school, and that transportation, we will be doing it with the meals. Uh, so we already do a lot of them in our, in all our kitchens. Things that, you know, you might not know that we are already doing that. So like, for example, he called me today and said, do you have this, 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 this? Because, you know, if you have this, I'm not ordering for tomorrow, because we can just utilize what we already have on hand. So we do this move internally, um, a lot. Like, a month ago, I was transporting oil to all the schools. Because we had a lot of oil storage at Brookside. So I was like, okay, everyone needs oil. I'm going to fill it up my car with oil. And I'm going to stop in every single school and deliver oil to everyone. So.
There's a lot of moving parts.
There are a lot of moving parts, but that gives me the opportunity to visit everyone, to see how everyone is doing, to see all the kitchens. So. You know, so I, I kind of like. Multitask, got a good day, that the weather was good, and, um, just did the transportation. So. That's why I don't want to use the flip-flop word anymore. We are not flip-flopping. We are creating something new that we don't know the logistics yet either. So let's, next slide. Alright, if I'm going too fast off my accent, my Brazilian accent, my Portuguese accent here is going, um, so that's where it's from. So Portuguese is the first language. Alright, so pizza, let's talk about pizza, for example. Current logistics and future. So here, here, you know, how we are preparing pizza right now. Pizza's prepared at Facetown, we ship, we transport hot and cooked to Waitsfield. So in big sheet trays, all the pizza already, ready to serve. Placing the, we have a food, um, cabinet, like a warmer that holds temperature safely at Waitsfield. And the, you know, the food is just stored there and too is ready to serve. Um, and, and anything that is cold, like a salad or fruit, is being transported there too. Um, the same way. Future, we, we foresee is that pizza's going to be prepared at Waitsfield, but then transported uncooked, cold to face. And then perhaps, it's not even in the day that it's going to be served. Maybe perhaps we're transporting that pizza the day before, because we already did the prep. We had the time, like we do in other kitchens, that we are sometimes prepping, you know, one or two meals in advance. And then cooking just a day off, because not every meal we can prepare fully in the day that we're going to serve. Um, you know, so maybe perhaps that pizza is already uncooked, ready to go. Or maybe we just need to do a few more toppings and at Facetown. And then when it's ready to serve to the students, a little bit before, we're just going to pop in the oven and serve to the students. So that's one example. Pizza, we thought, you know, sheet trays, everything that, you know, stromboli, everything that is in sheet trays. Will kind of have the same logistics of them. Then mac and cheese, the same idea that, you know, big batch of mac and cheese can be prepared at, um. So cor, current, this is how we do, the same ways the pizza, but in a hotel pan. And in the future, we foresee that. We're going to just do a big batch of mac and cheese, just like we do in all their school, all their schools, that we are, you know, cooking the. The elbows the day before, and maybe perhaps doing the sauce the next day, mixing it up and putting the oven. Uh, so those things can be, you know, e, even, uh, transport individually. Like the sauce in one container, the noodles or the noodles can be cooked even a face in it, you know, for what I can see. And then everything can be put together, put in the oven at Facetown. So that smell of cooking and all that is still going to happen at Facetown. And, um, and, and serve fresh. So. Here's the future. You know, I know that one of the questions, like, what would it take to operate two kitchens? Well, it's hard for us to answer that question fully with a precise answer, because. There are some things that we don't know yet in this system, in this model. And. Yes, well, we need another staff. Well, that's for sure. We need one more person. But, you know, first. Visualizing and understanding how the logistics of this system is going to work. Maybe perhaps we just need to hire another food service worker instead of another kitchen manager or another kitchen director. You know, maybe someone else work under the director we currently have, that is going to spend more time at Facetown. Or maybe it's going to rotate, might spend some time and more time, might, you know. So it gives the, us the opportunity to visualize and look at the whole food service system as a whole. And see where are the weak points and where we can improve, instead of just saying, oh, we just need to hire someone there that we. We don't really know exactly how much work that person's going to be doing, because to be honest and fair. Sixty meals a day, seventy meals a day for one full-time person. It, it might not be enough for the amount of reimbursement that we're getting for those meals. So we do need to take that in consideration, that, you know, we are funded, uh, we're, of course, we, we do get some, um. Assistance from, from the general fund, but the majority of our income are coming from federal funds, and it's based on how many meals are served. So we want to be, um, wise and. Um. Not waste federal funds or, um, you, you know.
Well, basically, we want to know what we're getting into before we start hiring, you know, we're not looking to hire other people, certainly if we don't need to. You know, if it seems like it makes sense that the program could be improved by having another staff member. Then potentially we could go that route. But I think our goal is to get kitchen open, get food going. And if we have, we'll have curveballs, there's no doubt about it. We have them every day. Um, but. We will be looking at just improving whatever we can as quick as we can, you know, get through the first week of school. And then regroup real quick. So that's kind of, that's kind of what we're looking to do. So if you have any questions, we're glad to answer them.
Alright, we made it.
One little.
It sounds great. I'm thrilled, because that, the only confusion I felt was how are we going to utilize both kitchens? But I didn't quite understand about breakfast. Can that just be served at both schools from its own? You don't have to do any more breakfast movement. That's awesome. That was just my one question. So, very exciting.
And just for the record, right now, we do move, move a little bit of a breakfast. But some of the breakfast items, we are being able to ship directly to Waitsfield through our vendors. So like milk and maybe apple juice. Some fruit, like that doesn't require much of, you know, like maybe raisins and things like that, that. Um, you know, they're already come ready to serve. We are shipping them directly to Waitsfield. So we're not transporting. We are shipping them directly to Waitsfield. So we're not transporting those items in a car right now. But the future model, we will not be transporting any breakfast.
Any other questions? I see Bob, you got your finger on the button, maybe, maybe, maybe.
Crazy here. What number? Oh, I'm five. Okay, are you? Um, I, I think it's, just watching this presentation was really informative and really helpful, and thank you for doing that. I was just sitting here thinking, what about all the people with the food allergies and all the different kinds of things you have to accommodate to? And so that's, that becomes individual by school, I would imagine.
And we do, we do take care of them.
Yeah, we have to follow federal guidelines for allergies. So we have a completely, you know, separate system for that, and we are mandatory to, to follow the USDA guidelines for, for allergies. And we work together for our nurses in all the schools too.
Danielle, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge the value I found in hearing this presentation. And I, I just really wish I could have heard it before the vote. I was one that, that voted against because of my concerns, that this presentation completely allayed, and I'm just so impressed. And I, I just appreciate the thoughtfulness with which you're approaching that, and, and I should never have doubted. But it is really affirming to hear how much thought you've put into this and the value that it's ultimately going to bring. The expense is one thing, but I just appreciate what you shared tonight, and I found that really helpful and informative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Danielle. Joining us from Scotland Airport.
Are you kidding me?
Okay, Kelly, did you have a question? I really appreciated the presentation as well. It makes a lot of sense. I'm, I am curious, the staff at Fason, have they been shared this presentation, so they have an idea? And then hoping that they were a little bit.
Oh, I'm sorry, the staff, I'm, I'm sorry.
Faculty.
The faculty, yes, the faculty, like, other than the, the food service staff, I guess.
I met with the staff two weeks ago again, and I'll be sure to share this with them.
Yeah, because I think that it really painted a really clear picture on how rich the food will, will be, which kind of leads me to the next, the next thing, you know. What will be the reflective piece? How will, like, everyone's wanting data or whatever, like, will you do a survey to the community to say, however, the food, how, how is the food now, or will, what will be the, are we hoping to see the numbers go up? Can the numbers go up? Are they already at their max?
The numbers are pretty high right now, as far as percentage, like how much we're serving at that school. So I don't foresee the numbers going up much, as far as how many meals we're serving, unless the population increases, which I think we foresee higher numbers at Fason last year, next year. So potentially, we can serve more meals. It, it's a, it's a hard, you know, there is no right and wrong, how to collect data on how people feel about the food. You know, of course, we will be analyzing, you know, visiting the school, doing taste test, you know, making sure that what people seeing the tray is, you know, there's some fun facts sometimes, like, for example, if sometimes staff is out and face in a Waitsfield, we might be satelliteing meals from like Crossbrook or Harwood, and people don't even know that. You know, so there was one day that, you know, everyone at Fason was out, and I got the call in the morning, and I said, okay, I have this and this across the block. I'm just going to go there, I'm going to cook all the meals, and I'm going to transport to Fason. Instead of like going to Fason, which I don't even know what I'm going to find there. I haven't been in that building, in that kitchen for so long. And, you know, I, I need to make sure that I have what I need. But, you know, I didn't announce that the meals, you know, they just thought it was Cheryl's food that was in the cooler from the day, you know, that she already had a prep. So it, so there's a perception, sometimes what you're being served, that it's not the fact, you know, and, and Waitsfield happens a lot too, because of location of Harwood. So Harwood would, would do the meals for Waitsfield quite a bit of times, when there's a shortage in staff. So it's, so it's a hard, it's, it's hard to take that. So I think we're going to take a look in all the factors. Everything that we can feel that is that we can analyze, and we can compare like with real data, or with like some sort of like school input from staff and students, and, you know, we were going to take everything in consideration of this.
Elementary school kids are not bashful. They will tell you if they like the food or not, and that's a fact. Neither are the middle school or high school kids, but, but, you know, they, kids will tell you if they like the food, or if they don't like the food.
I keep hearing about Randy Smorin peppered pie. If you ever get that recipe.
Is there any other board questions, comments for them? I think this was really great to, to spell it out very clear. I like the fact that we're not flip flopping. We need to stop using that word, because that's a very particular narrative that is not true.
Correct.
So I, this was great, very cut and dry and very clear. So thank you. Any last minute questions or comments for them? Go ahead, Ben.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, thank you very much for all that you do. And just so you know, when my family and I first moved here, we were blown away by the food. It's all that anyone talked about really when we first came here. And, and all of the parents, you know, I'm from Mwartown, so, so all the Mwartown parents got together and, and just started talking about the wonderful food in this district, and, and just how amazing it was, and how unique that was to this area, and that's because of your hard work. And so thank you very much for all that you do.
Thank you, and thank you for your support. We appreciate it.
We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much, guys, for coming.
You're welcome. Thank you for having us. Yeah, maybe I will, I will not wait fifteen years again. My retirement speech, you know.
And you can take a cookie to go if you want.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up is board reports. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Mike?
You're welcome.
No questions for him? Okay, Wayne wants twice. Okay, you're off the hook? Okay, so next is Lisa. So she had put in a report with some bids and stuff. So I just want, would like, because it's part of the consent agenda, I would just like her to talk about the wood chip ish, the wood chip thing, because on the consent agenda, she's asking us to go ahead and, and it was to authorize Lisa to accept the lowest bid for wood chip. So you could just explain that, just so everybody is kind of aware of it.
Sure, we went out for bid for wood chips for Harwood Unified, Harwood High School and, and Middle School. And the bids are not due back until tomorrow. So I couldn't include them in my report to be able to share the bid, bids or the lowest bid to be able to vote on it tonight. So what I'd like you to do, and we, we, we did this similar to last, my first board meeting, last August, when we were doing utilities for propane and gas, is that you allowed me to, to meet a ceiling or accept the lowest bid. And what I'm asking and requesting, because this is basically the last meeting until August, and I'll need to be able to get back to the wood chip bids quickly and respond to them, is for you to allow me to do the same thing and be able to accept the low bidder on the wood chips.
So yeah, so that was just, I just wanted her to just explain that, because this happened last year because of one bids in our meeting schedule. So did anybody have any questions for her related to her report, which has a bunch of things that we're going to approve in the consent agenda? Okay, I guess. Bobby, are you good? Okay. Kelly, are you good? Oh, okay. No, so that's part of the consent agenda. So the next up is the consent agenda. Bam, moving on. Oh, wait, does somebody have, what? Okay, so would anybody like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written? Or, yeah, or I mean, you could also read it if you.
Tori, if you read it, I'll second it.
No, she says no. Do you want to just bring? No, you don't, you could just, as written, if you, if you're.
Your time to shine, guys.
I make a motion to pass the consent agenda, approve it as written.
Second? Jake will second. Any questions, comments, anything? That's totally fine. Did you want to? Okay, so is there any, so if there's no, sorry, I'm going to, it's totally fine. Is there any objection, are there any abstentions to approve? Jake is going to abstain. Any other abstentions? Okay, that will pass for the consent agenda. Thank you so much. Okay, so we are ahead of schedule, guys. This is great. Especially since Mike is not feeling so good. So this is good. So our next thing is executive session. I would be looking for a motion.
Motion to enter executive session. Motion to enter executive session with all board members and Superintendent Dr. Mike for the purpose of discussing the evaluation of the superintendent.
Is there a second? Bobby's going to second. Is there any questions or comments, questions? Any objection to approving the executive session motion? Not hearing any or seeing any, that will pass. Carol, I will call you when we are all done. Mike sent everybody a link to the executive session. We will see you in that room.